I call this July 11th meeting of the Albemarle County School Board back to order. Do we have a motion?
We do, Chair Lee. I move that the board certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second. Moved by Dr. Acuff, seconded by Ms. Spillman. Could we have a roll call vote for that, please, Christine?
Mr. Graham Page?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Pace?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
And then I believe we have two motions coming out of closed session?
We do. I have another one. I move that this board deny the petition to grant an additional year of preschool to student A.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Acuff, seconded by Mr. Page. Could we have a roll call vote for that, please, Christine?
Ms. Spillman?
No.
Ms. Osborne? Mr. Chuck Pace?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin? Mr. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
With a vote for yes, two no, one abstention, the vote carries.
Thank you. We have one other.
All right, I have a motion. I move that we approve the appointment of Candidate One for the role of Principal at Albemarle High School.
Second. Moved by Mr. Page, seconded by Dr. Acuff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right, motion carries. Thanks very much. Next, we'll have our roll call. We'll start with Josiah Black.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Josiah Black, School Division Council.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Allison Spillman, At-Large Representative.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville Representative.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall Representative.
Judy Lee, Ravanna District.
Kaye Acuff, Jack Jewitt District.
Graham Page, Milla District.
Chuck Pace, Rio District.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Christine Diggs, Chief Technology Officer.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Chandra Hayes, Assistant Superintendent.
Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Officer Justin Gibson.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public schools and students, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Berlin, seconded by Mr. Page. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right, agenda is approved. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Chair Lee, just a question. I just want to, so as we are going to vote or move on the consent agenda, we have already pulled, okay, we have already pulled Item 4.5 out of it.
JGDA, yes.
Okay, so when we move to approve the consent agenda, we're moving with that change already in, or should I note that?
It's already in there, so.
Okay. I move to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
Second. Moved by Dr. Berlin, seconded by Ms. Spillman, noting that the Item JGDA has been removed. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right, consent agenda minus that item is passed. So we will be discussing that after the September CAC meeting. Next, we have announcements, School Board and Superintendent's business. Dr. Hawes?
Ms., or Dr. Hayes, you had an announcement.
Yes, I wanted to share some great news that's taking place here in ACPS. Four competitive swimmers from ACPS community recently competed in the Olympic Trials. David King participated in the 100-meter backstroke, 200-meter backstroke, and 100-meter butterfly. Sarah Cesarjak competed in the 200-meter breaststroke, finishing eighth in the finals. Gray David competed in the 100-meter butterfly, and Thomas Hillman delivered an outstanding performance, winning the men's 200-meter butterfly. This remarkable achievement qualified him for the U.S. Olympic Team, securing his spot for the Paris 2024 Olympics. We are proud to have such amazing students compete in the Olympic Trials. We look forward to watching Thomas not only represent the United States in Paris, but also Albemarle County Public Schools. In addition to the great things happening in the water, we also have some amazing things happening as it relates to space exploration. For over 15 years, Northrop Grumman has supported students from all over the United States to attend the annual Space Camp in Huntsville, Alabama. This year, they wanted to choose a school division capable of sending 23 students and five adults to the camp. The opportunity was communicated with our middle schools in late November, and five teachers showed immediate interest. ACPS was fortunate enough to send 22 students from Henley, Journey, Lakeside, and Burley, and four teachers from those schools as well. The teachers had to either teach science or engineering. Those teachers were Julia Weed from Burley, Karen Ackerman from Henley, Melissa Thaxton from Journey, and Jessica Miller from Lakeside. On Saturday, July 5th, our students left Albemarle for a six-day Space Camp focused on space travel and solving technical challenges. They will participate in activities that include communication practice, engineering challenges, and learning about rockets and the space program and space history. They will also learn about astronaut training, and will explore robotics, rocketry, and astronomy. There are also activities for our teachers. While at the camp, the teachers will participate in a Space Academy for educators, where they will learn new ways to present STEM concepts in classrooms to improve STEM instruction and career awareness. Our participants will return tomorrow night. When they return, we hope to have the teachers share their experiences with their peers during their DPLC meetings, as well as at Making Connections, and our communications team will help determine the best way to share student experiences with the community. Congratulations to these young scholars and their teachers, and thank you to their families for allowing them to participate in this experience. And we will be thanking Northrop Grumman as well for sponsoring our students.
That's wonderful news, Dr. Hayes. Thank you. And then we have, I believe, Dr. Kaiser.
Good evening, Chair Lee and School Board members. The 100 Black Men of Central Virginia, their organization's purpose is to improve the quality of life within the community and advocate eliminating the achievement gap of African-American male students through mentoring by its members. This summer, the organization has supported scholars from Albemarle County Schools during the 2024 M-Cubed Summer Academy and the Nesby Junior Summer Academy. M-Cubed Math Men Mission aims to increase the number of African-American males who enroll in and complete algebra while in middle school. The organization focuses on developing students' social, academic, and leadership skills in a safe and challenging environment. The program models the philosophy that learning becomes a natural process when real-world problems and culturally relevant resources are integral to curriculum and instruction. The M-Cubed Summer Academy is an algebra readiness program that supports the group's mission to eliminate the achievement gap of African-American males in grades K through 12. The National Society of Black Engineers, or NESB, is a nonprofit organization owned and managed by its members, with more than 30,000 members worldwide. NESB is dedicated to advancing engineering students and professionals' academic and professional success. Its mission is to increase the number of culturally responsible Black engineers who excel academically, succeed professionally, and positively impact the community. NESB offers its members leadership training, professional development activities, mentoring opportunities, career development services, and more. NESB Junior is NESB's main K-12 program, providing activities to help students discover firsthand how engineering and technology relate to the world around them, and discover the excitement of academic excellence, leadership, technical development, and teamwork. For the past 16 years, the M-Cubed and NESB Junior Summer Academies have led focused efforts to support students who are historically underrepresented in STEM, advanced science, technology, engineering, and mathematics courses and careers. These academies, along with their year-round components, provide safe, affinity-based spaces designed to encourage and empower students of African-American descent to self-advocate and excel. This evening, we have with us, and we thought, oh, he's here. We have with us this evening Mr. James Watson, 100 Black Men of Central Virginia President. We have teacher and educator leaders, and M-Cubed and NESB Junior Program coordinators from Albemarle High School, Ms. Lenika Barnes and Ms. Pearl Early, and from Walton Middle School, we have Dr. Pamela Venable. Mr. Watson, Ms. Barnes, Ms. Early, and Dr. Venable, and special guests that we have with us are here to tell a little bit more about the Summer Academy programming.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. Great to see you, Mr. Page. So my name is James Watson. I'm the new president of the 100 Black Men of Central Virginia. This summer was very unique because my own son was a member of the M-Cubed program. It had been a program that I was admiring even before being a member, you know, for several years. So this year was different. You know, he was there, and I was actually not there the first week because I was away on a business trip. But it really is a phenomenal experience. As you all know, in our area, when you look at SOL scores for African-American males, historically, they've been lagging. But this program truly is one of those types of opportunities that will close that achievement gap. And I mean, these young men work so hard, and they're just, they love learning. They truly love learning. And you mentioned a safe space. This is a space during M-Cubed and beyond, because we continue along with the young men beyond just that two weeks. But it's a space where you can go in and you can truly be smart, and they test each other. They played chess, they worked with robots. As you know, as you're going to find out a little bit more about, we're working with the engineering school. It's amazing. I'm so thankful that my own son is a part of this program, and that all these, the great teachers we have that are dedicated, you know, to make this work. And the future is bright. There's more we can do. We need your support. Thank you for having us, and again, I'm looking forward to the future. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Again, my name is Lenika Barnes. I am a science teacher at Albemarle High School. Also, very, very privileged to be embedded and a part of the planning and execution of both the M-Cubed Summer Academy and the NESB Junior Summer Academies. And as President Watson from the 100 just stated, I just wanted to give everyone just a glimpse into what we do at both of these Summer Academies. They both start on June 17th, or the Monday following the week break that we get from school. NESB Junior, I'm sorry, the M-Cubed Summer Program runs for two weeks. So this year, they hosted, we hosted at Journey Middle School, the M-Cubed Summer Academy. Over 40 students participated. Some of the students that you see behind us, and we also have our parents here, we want to make sure that we highlight families, because we couldn't do what we do without them, participate both in M-Cubed and NESB. So this year, over 40 students in grades 5 through 8 for M-Cubed Summer Academy received standard-based vertically-aligned math instruction from certified local educators in small classrooms with a 1 to 10 teachers-to-student ratio. Beyond academics, the students and teachers explore their cultural identities through the daily circle of brothers, which continues throughout the school year virtually, book readings, literacy and math discussion, shared meals, and even learn to play the jumbays and shakers with the African Dance Company. Shout out to Ms. Lilly and Mr. Witt. And for the NESB Junior Summer Academy, we host that Summer Academy for six weeks. And that academy this year is on grounds at UVA, which is one of the partners, and thank you, Ms. Early, for everything that you do for not just NESB, but for students throughout our community over the years. But NESB stands for the National Society of Black Engineers, and the NESB Junior Summer Academy hosts students from both all the comprehensive high schools and middle schools. So where M-Cubed serves our students from grades 5 through 8, they then can continue on with engineering, science, math, technology, reading, and art through the M-Cubed, I'm sorry, the NESB Junior Summer Academies. This academy runs through, for six weeks. This year, we are studying car design, and Mr. Miles Speedy is a math teacher at AHS alongside of us. So he's the lead math instructor. Mr. Dante Woodfolk is also a NESB Junior instructor, and he is going to be at Journey Middle School this year. He was at Burley last year, teaching special education, and I'm not, I don't want to forget Dr. Venable, so I'm going to come back to Dr. Venable. Also, in the back, we have, I'm so excited, because we, at NESB Junior Summer Academy, we have graduates who have gone on to college that come back every summer and serve as instructors. So they didn't want to get up, but in the back, we have our NESB Junior students. Can y'all stand up? Alexis Hunter is a graduate from Albemarle High School, and she currently works at Albemarle High School. Mr. Clifford Ayers-Brown is a graduate of Western Albemarle High School. Alexis is attending PBCC, and she'll be transferring to George Mason University in the fall. Mr. Clifford Ayers-Brown is a student at Howard University, and he's majoring in economics and political science, and graduated from Western Albemarle. Michaela, Michaela Jackson, I'm sorry. Michaela Jackson is a recent graduate from the University of Virginia with a degree in biomedical engineering, and she's transferring to, she will be attending, getting her PhD this fall in Delaware. And Ms. Leila Barnes is a graduate of Albemarle High School, and she is attending Virginia Commonwealth University, and double majoring in political science and criminal justice. And both Clifford and Leila plan to go to law school. And I want to highlight the students that are in the back. They're kind of shy. But Savion, Orthnell, Jada, and Joshua is here. And Dr. Pamela Venable is a part of, she is the lead coordinator at the.
I am Education Chair for M-Cubed for the Summer Academy. And she is. I work with Ms. Barnes. We work, we're a team.
And of course, Mr. Will Schaefer, who is a parent and principal at Albemarle, Assistant Principal at Albemarle High School. And we also have Dr. Deborah McDowell, who is a huge supporter of both M-Cubed and NESB Junior. Joshua, who, he is, do you want to say anything?
I didn't have anything prepared.
Okay. So Joshua is, is an amazing reflection of both the programming from the 100 Black Men of Central Virginia, as well as NESB Junior, so.
I'm currently in the, I'm in NESB, and I just joined like about a week ago, because I was, I was working as a TA at M-Cubed. And I think both programs, they help in different ways. NESB, I learned how to, I've learned teamwork, teamwork skills. And then I've also, we've been working on a microscope in NESB, and I've never really worked with a microscope, so I got to see different things. So that was pretty cool. I really don't know. I didn't have anything prepared. I wasn't, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but, thank y'all for having me up here. But thank you for having me up here.
Thank you, Joshua.
Thank you.
Gabriel, did you want, and this is Gabriel Schaefer. He is a participant in the M-Cubed Summer Academy. And Joshua, Gabriel, can you tell them what school you go to?
My name is Gabriel, and I go to Greer, and I'm going into fifth grade.
Can you tell them a bit about M-Cubed?
In M-Cubed, we learn about like fractions, and we also did like balancing tests, and we played chess, I know. We also, in STEM Lab, we worked on different coding to make stuff move on the computer.
Good job. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you.
And I know we are on a time, time slot, so I want to make sure, I just want to, just to remind and just say thank you to the Albemarle County School Board, to Dr. Haas and the Superintendent's Office, to Dr. Kaiser and the Office of Community Engagement, also to our local high schools and to UVA for always supporting our programs. And I just want to, just to leave you with this, our collective goal is to eliminate the achievement gap for Black and African-American students in stream subjects, science, technology, reading, engineering, art, and math. We celebrate and highlight the cultural wealth that Black and African-American scholars bring to our classroom and communities through supportive cultural affirmations. We aim to encourage, provide resources, and support scholars and their families in self-advocacy, confidence building, and navigating educational and academic environments. But most of all, we aspire to grow our own by fostering program, former program scholars to return as teachers, teachers assistants, and volunteers. And like I said, the most important aspect of what we do is standing right here behind us and beside us. And so I will say thank you, and Ms. Early would like to close us out.
Thank you. It is a pleasure to stand before you this evening with two most very strong organizations that continues to do wonderful things in this community and in this school division for children of color. I want you all to know that Dr. Haas has been the backbone of NESB from the very beginning, and that's been over 14 years. And I want you to know this, because when we have our event on the 31st, you all may not be there. So I want you to be much aware of his support, his sincere support, and what we have to do as a community, and you all, you are our community, is to make sure that every student in this school division receive an equal opportunity to an education. That's our job, and we need to do that. So we need to make sure that these Black students will have the opportunity to do things in our school division where in the past 30 years, they weren't even considered. So let's stay on this track that we're on, and let us make things better for our Black children, and our white children, our Hispanic children, our Middle Eastern children, and our, and also children from across the world, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much to everyone, and especially Ms. Early. Amazing, thank you. And I second everything that you said, and I think we all up here agree that those are our goals, and we need to accomplish them. So thank you very much, everybody. Did we have anyone sign up for public comment? No? Okay. So next, we will move on to our school division business. First, we have our Southern Feeder Pattern Elementary School name recommendation, Ms.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So nice to see so many friends from NESB Junior. Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me be here and share with you this evening. I'm Karen Waters Wicks, the Project Manager for Names and Names Reviews, and I'm here in my capacity as the Superintendent's Designee to report our recommendation for a name for the new Southern Feeder Pattern School. So as you know, you all approved on May the 23rd of this year for the staff to move forward with plans for building a new elementary school, which is in very close proximity to the existing Mountain View Elementary School for students in grades 3 through 5. So in accordance with Policy FA, the Superintendent is recommending a name for that school for So we come to this name in alignment with our strategic plan, our values of equity, excellence, family, community, and wellness, and the goals of driving students, affirming and empowering communities, and equitable transformative resources. Just to refresh you on the policy, with respect to naming of new schools, the School Board reserves the sole control and authority over the naming of any school, and the right to rename a school at any time the name is deemed by the School Board to be inconsistent with the current mission, vision, goals, and values of the School Board. It is the intention of the School Board to involve students, teachers, and interested citizens that reflect the diversity of our community in the process of naming schools, and the Board shall name schools in recognition of the geographic area in which the school is located, as or any entity, quality, or ideal the School Board deems worthy of recognition. Our process in arriving at this recommendation includes engaging the community through the design process of the building, receiving feedback, doing some research, an internal review of staff, as well as a survey of the community. These are some examples of the many times that the design team touched the community. And the Mountain View Elementary School PTO also held a meeting and got feedback. And these are some of the quotes. "A split school sounds like a great idea. A lot of schools in the north go by this model." "I like the idea of a continued community feel. We love the community we've created." It was apparent that the community wanted to see both schools as one community. With the current school having grades K through 2, and the new school being grades 3 through 5. In doing some research, we learned that many schools have, are paired in Virginia. Fairfax County has a number of them. Chesapeake Public Schools uses this model as well. The example that I'm giving here is the Western Branch Primary School and Western Branch Intermediate School. As you can see, the, they share a name, different descriptor, but their mascot is the same. The little bear just grows up a bit in the intermediate school. And so we expect these two paired schools to also share mascots and colors and things of that nature. An internal review was done of the department heads in Albemarle County, and not a single department expressed any concern about having school names that are very, very closely aligned. And so we went ahead and launched a survey on the 17th of May and closed it June the 7th, and asked the community to help us choose between Mountain View Primary School and Mountain View Intermediate School, or Mountain View Primary School and Mountain View Upper Elementary School. We did avoid the term Mountain View Lower School because. Uh we did avoid the term Mountain View Lower School because it does not translate well into Spanish and in other languages. There is a sort of connotation that it's lower or less than, and so primary is pretty well universally uh understood in many languages. Uh the results are, as you see here, both students and community uh three to one uh liked the name of Mountain View uh Elementary, I mean Mountain View Primary and Mountain View uh Inter, Upper Elementary School. So on the behalf of the superintendent, I am pleased to recommend that the new Southern feeder pattern school be named Mountain View Upper Elementary School with the revision to the descriptor of Mountain View Elementary School to Mountain View Primary School, thus pairing these two campuses, which will be very, very close together and which the principal of Mountain View Primary School would love to see a path, and I keep telling him I will mention it as many times as I can. And with that, uh I leave you with that recommendation for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So just for clarification, the current elementary school would be primary and the new school would be upper?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. So I'll look forward to your um response to this in your next meeting. Thank you so much.
What is the mascot of Mountain View now?
The Colts. Be a little, a little bigger Colt.
One question, so would the name change not take place officially until the new school opened, or does that name change?
Typically, our name changes start July the first, but because it is dependent on the new school, it would wait until the new school is open. So you may choose July first after the new school opens, I don't know, or try to time them similarly. And then at that time, I'll go through the same checklist of logistical uh things that we do with all of the schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. So we'll see this on consent for the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much, Ms. Waters Wicks.
Thank you.
Next, we have our instructional technology update with Mr. Foreman, Mr. Todd, Ms. Whelan, Mr. Paul. Is there a gas leak or something? Yeah. Is there someone to check?
So apologies for people hearing murmuring. There are a few of us who are smelling a gas leak, so I don't want to cause any alarm, but I would like to figure out who could check that out. It looks like Roslyn is going.
Are you on it, Helen?
So.
It smells like chlorine to me.
It kind of smells like chlorine too, so it's a weird.
I, I think flicker the flame would have us.
Mary, can you smell it out there?
Um the alarm will probably go off. What's that? Okay.
I think he went to get it, but Roslyn's checking too. So we'll just continue with this and then.
I don't think you need this.
I'm gonna call Trevor.
Dr. Haas is gonna call building people.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead. Yep, go ahead and proceed. Thank you. If any of us drop, then we'll just stop.
All right, fingers crossed. So good evening, school board. My name is Jamie Foreman. I'm the deputy chief technology officer for Albemarle County Public Schools. Our department is grateful for the opportunity to share our work this evening. Um just like ACPS, continuous improvement is a key focus for us. Over the years, we've had, we've strengthened our approach to collecting data and feedback from stakeholder groups about the quality of technology support we provide and the systems um and resources and tools that we make available to our different stakeholder groups, particularly as it aligns to our division's strategic plan. Tonight's presentation will cover our approach to collecting feedback, some of our findings, and important steps and actions to be taken. Next up is Clay Todd, our assistant director for technology integration.
Good evening, everyone. As Jamie introduced, I'm Clay Todd, assistant director for technology integration. I've had the pleasure of meeting many of you, but not quite all of you, so it's uh nice to see some new faces on the board, and I look forward to working with you. Um my role is to supervise the learning technology integrator team for our division. Uh we are a set of fourteen uh learning technology coaches uh out in the field assisting teachers with uh healthy technology integration and so on and so forth. Are we good? Keep going. All right. Um and I will let the rest of my team introduce themselves.
I'm Kelsey Whelan. I'm the manager for digital equity and learning. I work with Clay and the learning technology integrator team. Um and you'll also hear about some of my work with the digital equity report and some of the um learning technology projects that I manage.
I'm Brian Paul. I'm a learning technology integrator um assigned to Western Albemarle High School. Um and myself and the other learning technology integrators helped put together this um tech survey.
So tonight, we're here to share a little bit with you about how we use feedback from our various stakeholder groups to make decisions within our department uh at large. Uh tonight's presentation mostly aligns with uh the goal of equitable transformative resources. However, um much of what you hear will also uh sort of cover the other two goals. Uh you'll certainly hear, I think, quite a bit about affirming and empowering our communities tonight as well. So um tonight, we're going to discuss briefly what our mechanisms are for gathering feedback from our stakeholders, specifically our technology survey, our digital equity report, our listening tours, and we'll leave some time for questions at the end. Specifically, our division survey is designed to evaluate the systems and process that is, that we have in place uh in order to get feedback from students, staff, families, and admin around how those work. Our digital equity report is an approach that we use to identify any digital equity gaps within our division uh along with resource recommendations for filling those gaps, while our listening tours are sort of um spots uh like captures of how people feel based on data that we realize we may need uh more of. So the technology survey, more specifically, uh this is an internal survey used to strategically gather feedback, data from students, educators, and families regarding our implemented strat, our implemented technologies and systems of support, all in a way which can be directly disaggregated with the demographic and academic data sets available to us. Uh this allows our division leaders to make more informed decisions about the impact of technology on our mission, and it captures several themes listed there, digital citizenship, equity of access, technology standards in place by the VDOE, uh engagement with our core tools, many of which have been adopted by this board, uh efficacy of communication and support from our department, and more recently, um we've been collecting some data around artificial intelligence and the impact that it may have on instruction moving forward. So how do we get here with this survey? Uh those of you that have been on the board for a while may recall the Speak Up Survey um that was uh used in previous years. This was a nationally normed survey that we more recently, last year specifically, moved away from. Uh the reason for that being that the Speak Up Survey, while nationally normed, did not allow us to specifically know which students were responding, uh and therefore we were unable to actually tie that data back to our demographic data sets. So of course, in a division whose mission is to close achievement gaps, we need to know uh how the services that we have in place are impacting uh various groups of students. So for that reason, we moved our survey entirely in-house uh in two thousand and three, um and you're going to see a little bit more about uh that data. I'm going to turn it over to Brian, though, who has uh served on the committee for uh creating that and implementing that survey. He's going to tell you a little bit more about our process.
Okay, um so in terms of survey participants, through our process of creating the survey, we designed a unique survey for each of these stakeholder groups. Our elementary survey is for grades three through five only, as we're mindful of developmental concerns and considerations and appropriateness for younger students. However, we do still get data from those younger students in the form of the family survey. Um our secondary survey is designed for grades six through twelve, and we also have the separate surveys for families, teachers, and administrators. While there are some questions um that are shared across all of the surveys, um each group has also asked questions that are unique to their specific experiences and perspectives. So in terms of the creation of the survey, we started, we began with a focus on our division's strategic plan to guide our topic and question creation. Um so these three kind of items were what we really kind of leaned in on. Um providing grade level appropriate tech experiences aligned with our SOL standards, implementing our digital citizenship curriculum, and ensuring baseline digital resources for all. Those were our three kind of main strategic plan focuses. Um after we kind of identified that, we brought in some of our own department, tech department improvement plan um focuses. And for those, we were specifically looking at continuing to address barriers to quality support and developing and organizing support resources um that are more accessible to to all. After this, we met as a group of learning technology integrators to begin drafting the questions. We've linked our drafting process to, in in these slides. Um and once we had a good draft of questions for each one of these groups, um division leadership in instruction and our equity specialists were able to take a look at it, give us feedback, and kind of give a final seal of approval. So once we had our survey ready, it was time to push it out into the world. Um and in terms of engagement, we had to have different strategies for the different groups. Um for elementary students, they all take their surveys during their scheduled library time, um with teachers and librarians acting as the administrators of the surveys. For secondary students, they complete their surveys during middle school advisory and during their um their seminar classes in high school. For teachers, they were all emailed a link to the survey um in LTI newsletters, in principal newsletters, also through the division compass. And we also put up posters in various faculty workrooms with the QR code encouraging participation in the survey. Families were sent the survey um through links with Bright Arrow messages and text and email, also through principal newsletters. And there were also several LTIs that spent significant time going to the car lines of different schools and handing out flyers with QR codes, um because what better time to take a survey than when you're sitting in the car line? Um we continue to work on ways to increase the amount of diversity in our responses, and particularly for families. Um as compared to only, um this year, as you can see, we had over a thousand families respond as compared to only six hundred and seventy-four last year. Um so we're happy that we are continuing to increase that, and we're always trying to come up with new strategies for that. Um our division's director of accountability and research has shared that these current participation rates can be effectively used as samples for decision making. So once we have this survey out there and we're starting to get the data in, um I just wanted to kind of go over our data analysis process. Um each of these groups that I have listed over here in the data review, um each of these groups went through their own data review process. Um these data reviews help to inform the selection of digital resources. Um they help to inform our digital equity report, which you will hear a little bit about later. Um they also inform development of curriculum, the way students and teachers and families are responding um to how our digital citizenship curriculum is being taught. Um that helps kind of us pivot and shift. Um and they also um inform development of our computer science um curriculum as well. And finally, with our teacher surveys and with student surveys too, um we're able to kind of identify professional development needs that s, um teachers may benefit from. And I'm going to pass it back to Clay.
Thank you, Brian. Um in front of you, you see a screenshot um of our survey data dashboard. Uh you do have access to this dashboard. It will be, um we can share it with you later if you're not sure how to get to it. Um it is possible, however, though, through the filtering to sort of narrow down to a point where you might be able to identify specific students, so we don't have it directly linked in the presentation. Uh what I'd like to point out, though, in taking a look at this screenshot are a few things. Uh most importantly is over on the left-hand side, you see those um categories. Um this allows a school or a admin uh to directly target um responses from specific groups of students. Uh so we are able to uh drill down to whatever a school's SIP goal, a school improvement plan uh might be, or whatever the division's goal might be in terms of, again, that mission of closing achievement gaps. We can look very specifically at what groups of students think about the technology that they're using, the support they're receiving. Um I'd also like to point out briefly that first, we grabbed this particular page, there are many pages to the data for a reason, and that's just to point out our digital citizenship data that um you're seeing there that nearly ninety-five percent of students report receiving digital citizenship instruction, uh something we've been working very hard at as a team over uh many years. And certainly, you can see some categories are stronger than others, and so there's room to continue to grow there. Uh but we are quite proud of that. Uh we attribute that to um some of our efforts around attaining the Common Sense Media certification. Uh that's the curriculum that we use, and these, this is sort of a badge that a school can earn uh by engaging in a certain amount of digital citizenship instruction and also community outreach. A lot of that, uh we recognize too through our family field guide, which you all have, many of you have seen a copy of. If you have not seen a copy of that in the past, I'm happy to provide one for you. Uh and we are currently actually in revision of that field guide and our curriculum. Actually, we've learned from Common Sense Media is under revision uh to update it as well, to be just a little bit more modern. The next slide I'd like to show you is a, just a screen grab of what some of our uh data that we collect from students around tools looks like. Um it may look a little confusing that there's this window right in the center. What that effectively is, is a pop-up. So if you were to hover over any of the um responses on those pie charts, you're going to get this pop-up that's going to uh bring up the uh SOL pass rates for that specific set of students. So in this case, what you're seeing is that the students uh in, who do not enjoy using Snap and Read achieve these pass rates. So this is where we're starting uh to try and get at how effective are the technologies that we're implementing and actually moving instruction. Obviously, there's more and more that we can do here, but uh we're just starting to scratch the surface of what's possible. When you take a look at this year's data, we are still working to get the SOL data pulled in, um so you won't see that pop-up in quite the same way, but it will be there uh soon. You might also wonder, why do we ask the question, you know, why do, how much do you enjoy using these tools? Uh we don't just ask if they use the tools. We ask if they enjoy using because we believe that's the uh question that gets closest to engagement. And I'm going to now pivot over to Kelsey, who's going to talk a bit about what we're actually doing with all of this data and some of the steps we've been taking.
Thank you, Clay. So here are some takeaways from last year's survey data and what we, as the technology department, have implemented as a result. Um first, you'll see that data shows that resource use varies by school building, so we have implemented summer meetings with school administrators to review their survey data. We also work with instructional leads to ensure that our division adopted resources, which support the guaranteed viable curriculum, including our digital citizenship curriculum, are used with more fidelity. Second, our division adopted accessibility tools like Snap and Read, uh which is a read-aloud text-to-speech tool, are heavily reported by students who fall into achievement gaps as tools they enjoy using. We will continue to fund these tools while also researching additional supports to clove, close achievement gaps as recommended in the digital equity report, which you'll hear about on the next slide. Third, our teachers' preference for professional learning delivery varies widely between virtual synchronous and asynchronous, so we have implemented a learning technology program that offers all of these options. We have in-person, virtual, virtual synchronous meetings on Zoom, and completely asynchronous self-paced options through professional learning school G courses for teachers. Finally, our family survey data indicated that respondents preferred. that respondents prefer to receive information about digital citizenship in bite-sized pieces. So we have made a department goal to have a presence at more school-based family nights to help parents with just-in-time support and get them connected to our systems. In the previous school year, we also started a department committee around community engagement, which creates monthly newsletters called "The Techno" for families, staff, and students around common technology topics. Hopefully, some of you may have even received a techno in your inbox. Cool. All right, so as mentioned in the previous slide, much of this data is used in identifying needs and developing recommendations in our annual digital equity report. The report's purpose is to inform strategic decision-making in the pursuit of digital equity. Our definition of digital equity shown here is adopted from the U.S. Department of Education as "the ideal state where every student has the access and technology skills necessary to fully participate in learning experience and their school community." Ideally, these efforts then carry over to ensure that our students after graduation have the capacity needed for full participation in the society and economy of the United States. That report, at a glance, is also linked in the last slide and in our resources at the end. So here's an overview of that report process. At a glance, it starts with the collection of data and analysis of trends from multiple sources, such as the technology survey you just heard about. It also involves school equity tours in which Clay and I walk every single school in the district and talk to staff about their needs. Then I also look at Connect Hub data, which is the platform our LTIs use to capture coaching data from their work with teachers. From there, we perform an evaluation of our baseline technology, ensuring that every learning space has access to baseline hardware as well as internet access in school and at home. Then, looking at themes, identified gaps, and other trends, we evaluate potential solutions to ensure that they are instructurally valuable, compatible with our technological environment, industry compliant, meaning that they can scaffold to real-world tools to support relevant learning experiences for students, that they are developmentally appropriate, safe, and meet the needs of our community. We also review usage data where available to see who might already be using some of the tools and systems we are considering. Finally, the completed report is presented to multiple groups in and outside the technology department. Each group completes a prioritization activity to help us determine how and when to implement recommendations. This year's report had 18 different recommendations, so we're just going to stay at a bird's-eye view here and look at the five themes that emerged. If you'd like to see the specific recommendations, again, they're linked there. The first theme is around program evaluations. This set of recommendations requires additional input from other stakeholder groups to further define current state and collaboratively make recommendations. The second theme contains two instructional resources that would fill existing identified gaps. The third theme is entirely around professional development topics, including things like AI training for teachers and continuing PD around using our baseline technologies. The fourth theme of access considers family access to our core technology systems like Parent Portal, as well as educator access to innovative learning technology like virtual reality. And finally, the fifth includes recommendations for improving access to baseline technology like our interactive panels, as well as doing additional work to further define what baseline technology looks like in some of our specialty learning spaces like photography labs and digital media studios. Oops, cycloped on the report. There it is. All right. The pursuit of digital equity is an ongoing iterative process, so the annual report will also include updates from the previous report's recommendations. This list shows all the recommendations that were implemented in the previous year's report, like the implementation of ClassLink, our one-stop-shop resource portal for students and teachers, and things like our secondary broadcast refresh, where new equipment was installed in every secondary school to support student broadcast programs. Now, I'm going to pass it back to Clay to talk about our listening tour.
Thank you, Kelsey. So we don't always get it right. Sometimes the data, sometimes all the time, the data is only as good as the questions that we ask, right? And sometimes we find that maybe there were questions that we missed. This year, that was very much the case in that we started hearing through our LTI team, through word-of-mouth from teachers, that there were some questions that we really needed to be asking our staff, particularly at the middle school level, in regards to student behavior and device use and breakage. So we put together a set of questions that you do see in front of you and did a tour with each team in our department represented to ask the following. With respect to technology, what's going well for you and what's not going well? We've heard feedback about challenges you might be having with managing student behaviors and choices with technology. What strategies may have worked for you in your classroom? And what do you think about student laptops going home, especially in terms of age? And what else do you need? How can we help? From this tour, several themes emerged, and we're going to share just a couple of those themes and some of the actions that we're taking and next steps for us as a result. We found overwhelmingly that there were a lot of reports of distracted tech behaviors, particularly in the classroom interrupting instruction. So we are implementing a system this year. It is called LightSpeed Classroom Management that allows teachers to effectively create allow and block lists for students, as well as get a capture of what students are up to in their classroom. This is just in an effort to empower teachers to have a little bit more choice and say in the way that they are structuring their instruction. It's another classroom management tool. This one just happens to be for technology. We have heard and seen in our data and in talking to teachers a lot of device breakage, particularly at the middle school level. So we are working with administrators to provide some specific guidance around addressing device damage and coming up with some systems to mitigate those issues. And finally, we received quite a bit of mixed feedback across staff regarding the appropriate age for devices to be going home. So we are effectively doing more research there. We are reevaluating that, possibly doing some piloting to take a closer look at really, when should devices be going home? Is sixth grade, is seventh grade, is eighth grade the right time for that to be happening? There are obviously a lot of other takeaways. We could spend a whole other hour talking about them, and I'm not going to bore you with it. But you are certainly welcome to take a look at the findings that are linked here on this slide at the top. It's also linked towards the end. The following resources are also here for you. I mentioned the field guide. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, it is available in English and Spanish, as well as more digital citizenship resources if you want to take a closer look at our curriculum. And of course, the digital equity reports that Kelsey mentioned and the executive summary of our listening tour. That is all that we have for you, and we really appreciate your time, and we welcome your questions.
I have a few questions. So a lot of feedback we get is parents really concerned about too much technology use, which I guess it's a catch-22, right? Because we're all using technology all day long. So I would love a little more information on this LightSpeed. One program that I had looked into was GoGuardian. Is it similar?
It's basically the same thing. The reason we're not going with GoGuardian is that LightSpeed works with our web filter that's already in place, but it has the same feature set effectively. There might be some very small nuanced differences, but it is effective.
Because that's something that we hear a lot, is that, and I have mentioned this before, totally forthcoming. My teenager was spending money to get a different IP address so that he could get around all the blocks and whatever. Super proud, right? But you hear that a lot where, I mean, these kids are smart, and they know what they're doing. And so they are accessing YouTube. They're playing games during class. They're accessing really inappropriate material. And it's also just super distracting for the teachers and for the other students. And so I would love just more information on LightSpeed and which of those products, if we're using all of them, and how they're going to be implemented in the classroom so that I can get back to a lot of the constituents that have asked me those questions, and I don't have the answers.
We could most certainly talk about this for the rest of the night. It is a very complex and layered platform. To speak more generally about it, it is going to allow teachers to create allow and block lists. What you're speaking to in terms of VPN use or proxy use, some of you may have heard that before. It allows us, it's a type of software that allows a student to get around some of our systems. This will help to clamp down on some of that too, because effectively, if a student's using that, a teacher is going to see that they're not in the system.
Yeah.
And so that's just a big ping for us that, oh, hey, there may be some VPN use. We're also taking some other steps around that.
So is it incumbent, then, on each individual teacher to create a block list? Will there be a general block list for the division or for the school? Would that work?
So we do have a filter in place already that blocks the worst of the worst stuff. If we see the VPN, in some cases, they're able to get around that. But the filter is getting the majority of what would be considered inappropriate material. The filter is maintained by LightSpeed, not by us directly, but we are able to go in and, as things pop up, make those tweaks and changes. But what that will do, a teacher, yes, they will at least initially have to create custom, their own custom block and allow list. But we've just purchased the product. I can't, Kelsey, do you know if LightSpeed allows us to create division?
I just wrote that down as a question. I'm on the implementation team, and I think it would be useful data to see if something is commonly being blocked by teachers, we can then move it to the division. I don't know if the platform will allow us to do that. But another feature that I think is worth mentioning is that a teacher can also just turn off the internet for a student. So if things have really gone awry, they can just pause internet browsing for that student.
For an individual student. Wow, that's fantastic. And so this will be in every classroom that has technology? And will it be this upcoming school year?
Yes, we are hoping to implement it. We're preparing the training that the LTIs will deliver during pre-service, and it will be on all laptops, so third through 12th grade.
And, oh, that's great. What about tablets?
We are investigating some solutions for that. We haven't heard as much of a need there, but we recognize that there is still a use case for it. So we have some options that we're investigating.
But it would have to be a difference. That would have to be a different system because of how technically it functions. So we're going to focus our energy on getting this right, and then we'll.
I love that. That's really great news. Thank you. And I have a couple more questions. Just bear with me. What about typing? We're having all these kids learn to use technology, but we don't actually teach typing. And I mean, I'm dating myself, but I learned on a typewriter, right? Like, how to actually type? Are there any plans for teaching that to our students?
I wouldn't say that we currently have any plans in place. That's something we would need to partner with our Department of Instruction on, of course, if that were something that the board were interested in. It is, I can't speak to every single set of standards. I don't believe that it is specifically noted in the computer science standards, although those were just revised, so I'm not sure. We'll have to take, we would have to do a little more research and just have some conversations.
Yeah, I would love, John, if you don't mind, just some follow-up on that. I would love to note, too, your adaptive technology is fantastic. As the mom of a sped kid who relies heavily on it, I'm really impressed. And then my niece is nonverbal autistic, and the technology that you provided actually helped her learn to talk this year. So kudos on that. And then last thing is, these surveys seem to really rely heavily on opinion. Do you like this? What are we doing to gauge academic success or improvement based on individual software or technology pieces to make sure that it's really worthwhile and that we're getting, it's actually helping the kids, not just, do you like to use this program?
Right, that's a great question. So that's why we tie back to those academic data sets in the survey. I would definitely encourage you to take a look, click through. You'll see there that pop-up that, yes, we're asking about, do you like it? But when you hover, you can see, okay, but how did they perform on their assessments?
Yeah, I'll definitely dig into that for sure.
In addition to, so LightSpeed is the company that provides our internet filter. That's why we're purchasing the classroom management tool. But we're also bundling it with this platform called Digital Insight, which is going to show us usage data, which is something that we can then tie back to the survey and academic data. We don't currently have a really good way of capturing all these tools that we've purchased, are they actually being used, other than surveys, some ClassLink data? But this will be a really, a better view of what's actually being clicked on by kids and teachers in the classroom.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful. And as data-driven as this board seems to be, I think that that would be really helpful in budgeting purposes and things like that. We're making sure that the money that we're putting into technology, we're getting, we're seeing improved results in SOL scores and achievement gaps and things like that as well. So thank you. This was wonderful.
Awesome. Any other questions?
We'll have to have you come back sometime to talk about AI.
Love to.
Right, but I'm interested in access. And I know during COVID, there was about 600-ish students that could not get access to high-speed internet. And there was also, in one of the results, a concern about family access. So it was sort of a community, family-supportive. What are your recommendations for that? Do we still have that many families?
I'm going to let Kelsey take this one as manager of our ACPS-at-home program.
That's a great question. I think you'd be really pleasantly surprised that the County of Albemarle, the broadband office, is looking to achieve universal broadband by 2025, I think.
Wow, that is good.
We work closely with that office, so when they can't provide service for a family that doesn't live in the Comcast service area, we provide a hotspot to those families, and we are seeing those requests go down. We're not sure if that is related. I'm thinking that has something to do with people increasing in their connectivity. But we're also going to increase promotion of that program and just make sure that it hasn't fallen to the wayside because we're not in COVID times anymore.
Did we ever tie any of the SOL or achievement data with access to high-speed internet at home?
I don't know that we've done that. I can certainly.
We really have not, because it was very difficult to get accurate data about the high-speed internet access. And it was surveyed during COVID.
Right.
And it's a question that's asked on enrollment forms, but at this point, we're not surveying about it anymore. But the percentage of students without high-speed internet has gone down considerably, thanks to the broadband office.
Outstanding. That's good to know.
Any other questions?
Some of my questions were certainly just dealt with, and I appreciate that from the colleagues. So would LightSpeed serve a function of allowing teachers to have, it sounds like it, but some direct control over what students might be doing on a device? Like, I know Apple Classroom, for instance, will allow a teacher to just suspend a device and actually see what's going on on all the devices in the classroom. Is that the kind of thing LightSpeed will do?
That's exactly what it does, yes.
Okay. And then I know that I also hear from constituents about the appropriate use of technology and making sure that students aren't watching YouTube ASGOL videos. That happened to me, too, in my class. Go behind somebody and say, yeah, no, stop. no, stop. But it sounds to me like we've got some, with Lightspeed, we're going to be able to have a lot more control over that behavior where students move away from what they're supposed to be doing into something.
Right. And, you know, we know that, especially in middle school, it's a time where students are testing the waters, they're learning who they are, they are, it's natural to want to engage in distracted behavior and it's our job to help them learn how to manage that. And so that's how we'll be framing use of this platform. You know, what are the best practices for thinking through and helping students to think through their own use and, you know, paired with our digital citizenship curriculum and whatnot?
So if we do have tablets deployed, are they iPads?
They are iPads, yes.
So would Lightspeed cross-platform over to iPads?
Unfortunately, no, it does not. It does only, it has to be installed on a laptop, which is why it does not work on an iPad. But as Kelsey mentioned, we haven't heard as much. We do know that there may be some research to do there though and we'll take up, we'll start taking, potentially taking a look at some of those options once we've done our 312 implementation, right?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I had one more. I just forgot to ask one thing. Will there be communication going out to families about this? As much as I would love to think that every family is watching this feed of our meeting since there's so many people here. I would imagine that this would be something that parents would be very excited to hear about and encouraged for the upcoming school year. And so if we haven't talked about it yet, I would really encourage something to go out to the families.
Absolutely be a full, full-scale communication plan for teachers, students, families, everywhere.
Awesome. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for this report. It feels very thorough and it's very clear that this is a superior department.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice. They need to hear that.
All right. Next we have our transportation update, Ms. Jamie Gelner.
From the bottom, Jamie.
Christina is my birthday twin, so we're simpatico. Good evening, school board members. My name is Jamie Gelner and I'm the Director of Transportation. These first eight weeks have been a flood of information from drivers and staff, principals and parents, and we're already coming together as a team to start seeing what we can do together to continuously improve transportation and it's really been very exciting. Here's our agenda for tonight. We want to highlight a few things about our department and celebrate some successes. Then we will jump into a quick update on a project before discussing hiring in our current state. Our employees connect strongly to the mission of ACPS, particularly to know every student. You can see us primarily in Goal Three, Equitable Transformative Resources, ensuring transportation for students who require bus service to attend school. We have four major functional areas, long-term routing and planning, day-to-day operations, our administrative function and maintenance. These staff members across each section stay busy all 12 months of the year between regular and scheduled maintenance of fleet and county vehicles, regular home-to-school routing, summer school and future years planning or redistricting, hiring and maintaining compliance with VDOE and DOT regulations for training. The department services school buses every 45 days as required by state code and 565 county assets are serviced at least twice a year. This is on top of the things that come up for service with our aging fleet. Our department can certainly improve on on-time arrival, but we did end the school year at 97.6% across the division with ranges at each school between 96 and 99%. We performed 1,669 activity trips just from January to the end of the school year. We have four electric buses that avoided 35.2 short tons of greenhouse gases and 121 pounds of pollutants. We're currently at over 18 million safe-loaded miles, meaning that no students have been injured. Our average employee time in service is nine years. And last year, all of our home-to-school buses had air conditioning, which is something that has not been true in past years and probably feels pretty good this summer. We support a number of division programs, including career learning communities, chronic absenteeism in the form of second chance buses, vans for schools and Saturday schools or after-school support, guaranteed field trips, the newcomer learning center and much more. While we may be shorthanded in our department, the people who are here are working hard every day to support our students and our schools. I want to take a moment to focus on the bright spots and celebrate what the department was able to accomplish last year. We have an amazing staff in transportation and it's the number one reason why I wanted to take the job. We celebrated five members at the end of the school year who were selected for their great work throughout the year. Ronald Wengate was our MVP. So Ron has been an invaluable asset to his team. He's our lead driver at Murray Elementary and his peers by providing unwavering support and leadership. He's a consummate professional who consistently goes above and beyond his duties to ensure the success of his team. He's demonstrated a strong commitment to personal and professional growth by supporting the transition of lead drivers in the Western feeder pattern. So many of our lead drivers were all a very strong team out there and three of them retired this year, kind of all going out together. And I was so happy that Ron decided to stay. Our Staff Member of the Year is Rich Tischlevitz. Rich is an all-star in our routing department, handling an increased amount of responsibility with our restructuring and making himself available to help cover dispatch in the afternoons. He's always an effective communicator. He works closely with our lead drivers and supervisors to get the routing and driver assignments streamlined and his level of communication with parents and schools is unparalleled. He handles all of our alternate bus stop requests and he's also been with the department a really long time. Alan Sippel is our Driver of the Year. Alan has come in as our first flex driver and has done an exceptional job in the flex role. The flex, the flex driver is someone who's a dedicated sub, so they know that they will drive a different route every day. This person needs to be a good student manager, a great driver and a good communicator. Our Assistant of the Year is Beth Powell. Beth is an outstanding assistant demonstrating exceptional dedication and commitment in her work. And Lisa Martin is our Van Driver of the Year. She goes above and beyond to support her students and parents. Her students adore her and parents trust her to provide the highest level of care for their children. So this is a quick update on something that will be changing to start this school year. Because we have more substitute bus drivers than ever before, we've had more challenges with our afternoon supervision process. For all pre-K and kindergarten families, we require an adult to meet them at the bus stop in the afternoon. For grades one through five, it is parent choice. In the past, we've required that adult to show up with an ID card to show to the driver so that they know they are the adult who's supposed to meet the student. Sometimes at large bus stops, this can be challenging and people sometimes forget their IDs or they're not on the manifest. Mountain View Elementary piloted a new program this school year. The main goal with the new process is to make sure we can safely and quickly get each student off of the bus to their designated caregiver. We will be providing four bus pickup cards to each family with a number on it and students will have matching numbers on their backpacks. Caregivers will show their cards at a stop to match students and adults. If they forget the card, they can continue to show ID and the driver will verify with the manifest. This new process provides additional ways for families to show identification and they can manage who gets the cards. It should be quicker at large stops than for non-English speaking families. And we're coordinating with schools to get this done and we really appreciate their help. Shout out to all of the office associates who will probably field some of the calls and help us. I want to give a really big shout out to the Human Resources and Communications teams. They've been working really hard. I think they've really, when we talk about working together as a team, this has been a really big team effort and they've just, they've done really great work and I appreciate it a lot. Communications has gotten our message out on the news, on social media and elsewhere. We've got new posters and flyers we're passing around. Human Resources, Human Resources held a transportation-specific job fair in June. We've got a larger one for the division next week. We have implemented sign-on bonuses and referral bonuses and to date, we've had about 66 applicants since the springtime for the bus driving position. We're seeing a result of about one out of eight applicants who actually follow through and get to training. Right now, we have nine, actually, I had eight, but we have nine full-time bus drivers in training and we have four who will start next week. I've got 16 who are in various states of in-processing, whether it's having to redo their physical, needing an additional eye exam, several who we just got in the past few days who were just starting in-processing. And some of those do just become responsive, which, you know, unresponsive, which sometimes happen. They just change their mind. So, starting next school year, one thing that I heard when I started this position is that we wanted to notify families sooner if we would have open routes. We are in the middle of our training process of all these drivers I just mentioned and also our routing process, so there are still a lot of adjustments to make. We ended last school year with six open routes and we've had additional people retire, resign or leave the position. We also started last school year utilizing a third-party vendor for seven of our special education routes. For many reasons, including that these students really need consistency, we will prioritize reducing our dependency on third-party vendors. This means that we will be covering additional sped routes to start this school year. We also are just seeing a rise in service requests for special transportation. I don't have all of those numbers with me, but I have hired a special transportation manager, yay, and put together a team this summer to start digging into our current state. Katie Compel, our Director of Specialcation, and I and our teams have met twice this summer and we'll be working together to collaborate on any improvements we need for our students. Specialized transportation can occur for several reasons and one can be for our unhoused or foster care students. They may be residing in another county or further and we're required to provide transport. So we do have a student in Newport News. We've got some in Richmond. You know, these are where some of our vans go when you're asking like, what are we doing with our vans? And we have more of those types of requests. So for all of these reasons, we're estimating nine open regular school bus routes to start this school year, meaning that we don't have an assigned driver for that set of elementary and secondary runs. Another complicating factor right now is that we have not finalized the routing process. This usually happens the first week of August and our school division completes its data rollover on July 29. And while we have enough data to start routing, things are kind of finalized on that July 29 process with student data. So in order to notify families who may have open routes sooner, we need to pick routes now. My staff met and we did identify nine routes together. Our process was this. First, we sorted all of our regular routes by gap group one status, which represents our economically disadvantaged students, English language learners and special education students. Then we eliminated all of the routes that were open last year and we just took them off. Then we eliminated Agnor, Greer, Woodbrook and Red Hill routes from our list. These are schools that are federally designated for targeted support and improvement. From there, we started picking routes across the division trying to spread them more evenly across schools, but not necessarily among feeder patterns. And once we started landing on those choices, we looked at the distance and the length of the route so that if they had similar numbers of gap group one students, we may have chosen a shorter route or one that had more portions that were closer to the school. After tonight, I will brief my lead driver staff and then consult with principals. And barring any major reasons to change something, we will notify the impacted families by July 22. We hope that things shift and change and that many drivers complete training by August 10. We're trying to be realistic and to communicate sooner to families. If we're able to cover any of those open routes, we will certainly keep the board updated and those families and students will be notified by August 16 of any good news. Even with taking the open routes from last year off, we cannot guarantee that the same families won't be impacted if students move schools or up a grade. I know that was a lot to take in and hopefully it wasn't surprising news. We have tried to keep our community abreast via emails and news stories. And I think our awesome communications department is preparing a message to go out for tomorrow. So do you have any questions?
You made the comment, understand and are understaffed in our office. So is it both driver and non-driver positions within your office that are unfilled? Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. We did hire an awesome trainer this summer. She's going to start next week. I'm very excited. I lost an area transportation supervisor. He went to another county at the end of the school year and he, he was great. He was only here for a year. People really liked him, but I have hired a new person. She's not going to start until the end of July, first week of August, but she's new to Albemarle, so she'll be learning. I have another area transportation supervisor position open, a routing position open, a dispatcher position, an assistant director I need to hire. Yes.
So if I were to ask what you're most concerned about, what would it be?
You know, I feel really good about things. I think when I, I'm trying to get a new position of an operations manager posted. When I get, when I start getting these people that we have hired in and there's more people to delegate to, I think things are going to start rolling. You know, I wasn't kidding when I said the reason I applied for the job is, you know, I worked there before in 2015 and there's a lot of people that still work there. And they're the reason I went back. I mean, there are people that I know that I can rely on. They've worked hard for you through COVID, these past couple of years and they're still there. And I know I can go to them and say, can you do this? And they, they're getting it done. So I'm not, I'm not worried. I'm hopeful with how much work our human resources and our communications team have done, that this pipeline doesn't dry up. It will, it's going to stay. And so my biggest focus next school year is to really, you know, the summer was listen to the drivers. They talked a lot about student management and parents. And that's why you see this PM supervision change to try to help with that. We're going to focus a lot on our student management process, training to make sure all these new drivers feel supported. I have a supervisor retreat scheduled for August 9 and for all of us there, our main focus is, hey, I'm new. Half of us in our department as leaders are new, including our lead drivers. How are we going to work together to support each other, ensure that we all, you know, my leaders have the right training. They feel comfortable. They feel successful in their jobs. So I want to make sure that all of these new leaders and drivers I'm hiring stay and feel supported. And I think if we continue to collaborate with human resources for one, we can, we can do that. Yeah. I'm excited.
Thank you so much.
I really appreciate the proactive communication. I feel like that's a theme tonight, but the message that went out even before the school year was over, warning parents that, you know, this could be an issue. I think that that's really helpful. So thank you for that. I don't know if I missed it, but do families have to register for transportation this year, the way that they did? Because last year, we kind of wiped the slate clean and started over. If you're registered for transportation and you're keeping it, there's nothing you need to do. Is that correct?
No, yeah, we did not do that.
Okay.
I've tried to just continue to ask if you want to change your transportation and no, go ahead. But we didn't wipe it clean. No.
Okay. So if you're registered and you're keeping it, then you're good?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Jamie, thank you for taking this job first. In terms of the turnover, I mean, we've had a human resources report a few sessions ago. Have you done stay interviews or exit interviews? And, you know, we're now paying more than any of the other transportation entities in our region. Why are people leaving or staying?
So I have done nothing, but our human resources department has done great work and I have a lot of qualitative data on my desk. I also have the, you know, our Gallup data. And we talked about it a little bit at the end of the school year, but that's one of the things we're going to start looking at to make our department plan at our supervisor retreat. And I think the qualitative data, Shay, what's Shay's last name again? Carter Schiffman. She is, we, she's got a great protocol that I'm going to steal from her and see if some of Claire's people can help me out to facilitate that conversation. But I think Gallup gave us a protocol that really shows when, when employees answer this question this way, here's what they're asking for. And then looking at what people are saying, I think it will help us really try to identify where we need to focus as a team. My gut is that it's training and with, again, new people that if we're putting them in these hard jobs, that they know what they're supposed to do and they feel supported. It's not an easy job. You know, I didn't want to, you know, be negative, but the impact has not just been the driver shortage over these years. You know, when I worked here in 2015, I was over the routing department and we had 160 buses. You had 129 on the road last year. We got more kids. We got more sped. What that means is you're doing a lot more with less. Those rides are much, much longer. There's more kids on buses. Our buses are going, you know, they're, they're driving more mileage and it's impacting their wearability. It's more than just the nine open routes. We have 11 stacked routes. We need to get people to hire for those. And then we really need to get 10 more after that to get back to service levels because our mission isn't to get kids to school, it's to get them safe and ready to learn. And if they're on the bus, you know, for an hour or more, are you going to show up really at your best? We, we got to ask the right questions to get really, you know, to the improvement that we're really looking for. And it'll take some time, but.
Yeah. I mean, I rode on a bus last year where there's so little wiggle room if someone calls in sick. And so they were, the constant communication between the two drivers, making sure that they could pick up all these extra kids. I was tense just being on the bus. So, I mean, it's a tough job. And, but any feedback you can give us, I mean, we've increased the salary, we have a. But any feedback you can give us, I mean, we've increased the salary, we have a signing bonus. How else can we, as a school board, help? Would be useful.
I think, I've been looking at, I don't know if you've heard of Zoom, but Zoom is a, this private company. A mom in like California said, I'm going to solve the school bus crisis. And out there, what she did is she got a bunch of school buses and she paid them $40 an hour. Now Roanoke, they have always outsourced all of their transportation. They just hired Zoom as their new contract. So I looked at what they're going to pay them. How are they going to get drivers if Roanoke can't get school bus drivers? And they're offering $25. So I think we're in that right ballpark, you know? And, you know, the other thing that's hanging out there is what's happening with the city. So we'll, you know, I went to my first regional transportation meeting with Diantha and everybody. And it's, we all compete with each other. So we have to wait and see what everybody else starts doing around here. I think it's a great number right now, but if somebody else has a higher one, then that's going to be the great number.
Just keep us posted.
Jamie, this, this might be something that we would deal with later and I'm sorry if I'm asking it too soon, but are we deploying 14 passenger buses that our coaches can drive at the high schools for these small team athletic trips? Is that something that we can look into?
Well, we're not allowed to use 15 passenger buses.
Right.
But I happen to see somebody back there that might know the answer to that question.
Well, it's, yeah, and it's.
I don't, I'm not, I don't know the answer to that.
That's the cutoff. You're right.
Yeah.
14, 14 to 15. It's really about how many seats are on the bus.
This is Bill Morris. And he is one of these people who I know I can rely on.
So my name's Bill Morris. I'm the program manager for routing and trips. So I oversee our routing department and I've been doing the field trips for years now. We have four A buses in our fleet, which we use for home to school. And in order to drive one of those, you have to have a special endorsement on your driver's license. So it's not a CDL, but you have to go through all the same training that our CDL drivers do. So they would have to be available to go through that training with us. And we have done that, but it's, it's a lengthy process and not every coach is really interested in doing that.
How many seats are on those buses?
So there's, they're 14 passenger.
Okay. And you really have to do that?
Yes.
Because.
The state requires anything above 10 passenger that you have a school bus endorsement.
Okay. I must have been doing things wrong.
They changed, they changed some laws over the years.
Yeah. Okay. Maybe ignorance is a good excuse this time. And what about field trips? Are we able to cover those?
So absolutely. We have a very dedicated driving staff that loves to make a little bit of extra money during the midday and drive field trips for all of our schools. The number that Jamie put up there is fairly typical. We've done a lot this year. We've expanded into the guaranteed field trip program, which provides guaranteed experiences for, right now, up through eighth grade. Two trips a year, about half of them are covered by our buses and half of them are charter buses. So we've been doing a lot of field trips. There's a lot of interest in that. And so far, we're able to keep up with that.
That's great.
Lot of, lot of good trips.
Jamie, you had a field trip number earlier. I think you went by it kind of fast. Can you say that?
It was 1669, but that was only half the year.
Yeah. How many again? 16?
69.
That's huge.
But I think, that's kind of, you know, I just came from the strategic plan. So I'm like, got all these guaranteed field trips in our plan and we're making it happen. And you can see it in a lot of other places and it's exciting. It's exciting.
I want to also just call out, we, that was Sunday, right? That we had the extra transportation service for the students from Virginia Beach.
Oh, yeah. So Bill helped me.
So tell the story.
Matt called me on Sunday in my COVID state and I was like, oh, man, I'm already having to work on a Sunday. And he said Billy Hahn and a neighboring school division had called, their bus had broken down. I think it was Virginia Beach City and they were like a wrestling team. And so I reached out to William and Bill and just said, hey, can you see if we have any drivers that can help this team out? And so Ryan King, he's, he drives at Agner, right?
Yes.
And he's a, he's a Croazian. He's got a daughter that's the same age as my daughter. He stepped up and he met them, picked up the kids because it was very hot and just took them to the VHL cell office while they waited, you know, to get transported. So very helpful. Bill knew just what to do.
He needed his own slide on here.
Jamie, I have a concern. One of our retired bus drivers also mentioned this too. I've noticed quite a few buses and I'm not sure whether it's just in certain areas or not, but they have like peeled paint on the hoods.
Graham, I've noticed it too.
Right. So what can we do? Because it's really not a very good impression of Al County at all.
Yeah, I think another thing people have mentioned is just the sign in front of our offices. It's pretty old if you, don't, don't look at it, Graham. Yeah, I think that's something we'll, we'll have to dig into. I think Dan Megan is our fleet manager and he has, he's doing some of that maintenance over the summer when we can kind of get a little bit more touch points with our buses. And I, I can get back with you about what the specific plan is.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I think, you know, we do have to see the buses every 45 days and we see them for other regular or not regular maintenance, but that kind of stuff, it's like we've got to make time and plan for that. And so I'll get back with you.
Okay, thanks.
Jamie, I believe last year, at the start of the year, when we had our 12 open routes with our 996 students, I believe that was out of 10,000 students who had requested transportation. That might be not a number that you have off the top of your head, but you said that we had nine open routes. You're anticipating possibly nine open routes this time. Do you know what, like the number of requests, if that's about the same as last year, 10,000? I know that.
You mean the number of students who won't receive a bus, is that similar? The number is not that much lower than 996, but we haven't finalized all of the, like I said, I'm going to talk to the lead drivers and the principals next week. There may be some slight tweaks, but it's, it's maybe 100 or so fewer students.
And is that out of the same basic number of students requesting? Like it was like 10% last year.
I haven't looked at the requests. Do you know if we're seeing a decline in requests?
Around 9,000.
Okay.
9,000.
So people are just checking now for us, which is good.
Right. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, thanks very much, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
All right, next we have a scheduled break. I think it smells a little bit less like gas in here. I was going to move the break, but we made it through. Okay, so it's 8:07, so we'll be back at 8:17.
When I talked to Jamie the other day, when I had the one through, she said, would you please be hired 19?
Eight seventeen, we're back. Next, we have Dr. Kaiser and Mr. Brennan.
All right, good evening Chair Lee and School Board members. The Office for Community Engagement is thrilled to share information regarding the launch of the Community in Schools Model for our School Division for this upcoming school year. Tonight, our agenda includes my brief introduction to discuss our road to Communities in Schools Model that supports the Division's mission, vision, and strategic plan with feedback from families, staff, administrators, identifying the specific needs of students and families, and the rationale for why CIS was selected as the model for the School Division. Next, Mr. Patrick Brennan, founder and CEO of CIS Nova, will give an overview of the CIS Nova Model, share information about the CIS Network and Partner Schools, as well as provide an example of the family engagement work facilitated by school site coordinators. He will also discuss typical CIS programming that supports students' basic needs, attendance, social-emotional learning, and college and career readiness, with examples occurring at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. And lastly, Mr. Brennan will share data about CIS's impact on student academics, social support, and funding capacity. Then I will close with the next steps for the launch and implementation of Community in Schools, ACPS, on the Lambs Lane campus, Greer Elementary School, Journey Middle School, and Albemarle High School, and Red Hill Elementary School. So everything we do in ACPS is centered around our strategic plan, "Learning for All." Our vision, learners are engaged in authentic, challenging, and relevant learning experiences, becoming lifelong contributors and leaders in our dynamic and diverse society. CIS's mission is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. Our mission, working together as a team, we will end the predictive value of race, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. We seek to build relationships with families and communities to ensure every student succeeds, and we will know every student. Our values include equity, excellence, family and community, and wellness. CIS believes young people thrive when adults care about them on a one-to-one level, and when they also have a sense of belonging to a caring community. Consistent with our goals of thriving students, affirming and empowering communities, and equitable and transformative resources, Communities in Schools touches all three goals. However, the primary focus is on Goal One, thriving students, and Goal Two, affirming and empowering communities. Over the last two years, we have researched and explored community schools as an avenue to provide one-stop holistic support for our most marginalized students and families. Feedback from ACPS families and students indicate a need for basic supplies and hygiene products, dental and medical care, such as dental cleanings, medical checkups, and immunizations, and mental health support. Families also identify food insecurity, childcare, and enrichment opportunities for students, housing, transportation, access to jobs, adult education opportunities, and career pathways. If the basic needs of families and students are not met, then students are unable to come to school equipped and ready to focus on learning. As a result of our desire to meet families and students where they are and provides positive support to lift and enable them to have a level playing field in which to learn and grow, members of our central leadership team and school-based staff embarked on a community schools book study examining the various community schools' models, the specific impact on students and families, and the creative, out-of-the-box strategies to support students and families, as well as the entire school community. Using schools as hubs, community schools bring educators, families, community partners together to offer a range of opportunities, supports, and services to children, youth, as well as their families and communities. Community schools provide expanded learning opportunities that are motivating and engaging throughout the day after school and during the summer, offer essential health and social supports and services, and engage families and communities as assets in the lives of their children and youth. Community schools respond differently based on local needs and include the voices of students, families, and community members. Schools become centers of the community and are open to everyone beyond school hours, including evenings and weekends. After engaging in the book study and exploring the various models of community schools, our team decided to pursue Communities in Schools models for several reasons, including CIS is a national model, which provides access to their national resources and affiliate networks. CIS schools will have a site coordinator who has access to peer support across the country and all over the state of Virginia. There is a program manager onsite to support the school's site coordinators and ensure their success. The site coordinator is another adult in the building who will case manage up to fifty students and families, which will alleviate some work from other staff. The site coordinator provides tier-one services that would benefit the whole school, as well as tier-two and tier-three services for students and families they case manage. CIS has grant funding that will support fifty percent of the site coordinator costs for three years, which gives us time to create sustainable funding streams for these integral roles. And CIS does have proven outcomes and a track record in improving attendance, behavior, and graduation rates, to name just a few. Our team decided to take a trip to visit CIS Nova sites, to speak with administrators and staff, tour the facilities, and see the model in action. We were able to see examples of supply and food pantries, and hear about tutoring and enrichment programs, as well as programs focused on family engagement. We also talked with one of the site coordinators, who was preparing to set up a market for families to pick up fresh fruits and vegetables. Through our visitation, we could envision how this model could be incorporated into ACPS, and we're eager to share this with the principals to see who might be interested in CIS. Red Hill Elementary School Principal Nancy McCullen has been interested since the very beginning of our discussions of CIS. Because Red Hill School is in a more remote rural area, sometimes there are challenges with securing tutors and volunteers and other community resources that are more easily obtained by the urban ring schools. Principal McCullen is excited to have additional resources and partners through CIS connected with Red Hill. Also, in thinking about model expansion, it's great to have a school in the Southern feeder pattern as part of the launch. The diversity and identified need of the Lambs Lane campus, Greer Elementary School, Journey Middle School, and Albemarle High School, proximity to the Newcomers Center and the Boys and Girls Club, and with the building of Center Two, and the opportunity for strengthening and expanding community partnerships, such as Loaves and Fishes, makes Lambs Lane a prime site for CIS and an incubator for innovation to grow community schools. We can see the potential of the model in ACPS. However, I would like to turn things over now to Patrick Brennan, founder and CEO of CIS Nova, to talk with you more about the model. All right, Patrick.
Thank you. Thank you all for the opportunity to come. My name is Patrick Brennan. I am the founder, CEO, of the Community Schools Affiliate in Northern Virginia. I come to this position as a former classroom teacher. I started it in Arlington County, where I was a teacher, where my kids went to school or still going to school there. And probably very similar to your school system, it's a good school system, well-resourced, good teachers, a lot of good service providers in the area, but yet, being in the classroom, it was quite obvious that schools structurally have a tough time getting those resources to students that need them the most at the most appropriate time. And so, that sort of informed my journey to start this affiliate about twelve years ago. And this affiliate is part of a larger network, which I'll share with you. And as your journey, listening to the journey of you guys coming to sort of study community school models, which there are several, I believe the growth of CIS Communities in Schools is reflective of the strength of this particular model. And up on the screen, you see the Bomber Group, Steve Bomber from Microsoft, last year just announced investing, that's how we use the word, investing $165 million into the larger network of Communities in Schools, because he sees the value of it, he sees the measurability and the evidence behind it. And so, I think it's a model that's ultimately separating itself from a lot of others' community school models. Let me see if I can move on here. So this is the model. In reality, it's all focused really, if for nothing else, it's the human being in the school. It's the site coordinator. That's really the difference for CIS's community school model versus some that sort of co-opt parts of other people in the building, or come in episodically into a school. Our model is having a full-time, trained, supported site coordinator in the schools that we partner with. It starts with a needs assessment, and it's not just to find out what the needs are, but it's also to find out a little bit more about the communities, the school communities that we're serving. So I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to meet all the principals from Lambs Lane and from Red Hill, and your principals are sound, they're great, and they know what needs to happen. It's just a matter of the capacity to do everything that they want to get done. So the needs assessment is not only to understand the need, but also to understand who's already doing a lot of good work, because we don't want to replicate, we don't want to duplicate the efforts that are already happening, the investments that are already happening, and people doing the jobs that they're doing already in the school. So the needs assessment happens every year at the end of the year, and it informs sort of a school-wide annualized plan for my site coordinator at that school. And as Dr. Kaiser was mentioning, it's a tiered support system, so there's schoolwide goals, there's sort of tier-two, which is sort of cohort supports, could be around a cohort of a particular student population, and then there's sort of case-managed or tier-three supports that happen. So we set these goals after these evaluations every year. We sit down with the school leadership of every school we're in, and we say, "This is what we see? Is this what you see? Is this our value add? Does this extend the work that you're doing in reaching more students and families and reinforcing the good work you already have going on here?" And with that comes quarterly sort of monitoring and support. So we come to the principal, whoever our contact is, at the end of the first quarter, and say, "Here's the goals that we set, you know, a few months ago, here's where we're at, I think we're on track for these three. These two, I think we need to adjust, because for a variety of reasons, we need either more support, or we need to sort of think differently about those goals." But generally, the goals don't change, just the approach and the intensity of the resources that come in will change. So it goes from a needs assessment to a school annualized plan, and then monitor, adjust, and then evaluate. And that's sort of ongoing. So the plan is for the year, but the work happens, as you can imagine, throughout the year. For me, as a former teacher, I know it's really easy to get co-opted when you're in a school, when you're supplying support, and there's a lot of flashing red lights that come through a school throughout the school year. Having a goal, having set goals that have measurable outcomes, it's a real good guardrail to make sure that we can be as effective as we possibly can in the work that we're doing in each school. It doesn't mean that we won't support other things that are going on, but that's really sort of the North Star for our site coordinators, and for the support that we bring that school that we're in. So this is the larger network. This is what CIS looks like across the country. We're going on to fifty years now. We're now in more than half the states. Two million students have been served this past year. This has been a very slow and deliberate growth, and it's really about sustainability. And so, we're very proud of the model that we have. We have a national office that sort of brings in all the student data that we have that shows a lot of the outcomes, can show in a national impact what we do there, obviously in Arlington, there in DC. And then we have state offices and independent affiliates, and I'm one of those affiliates. In Virginia, this is what it looks like in the Commonwealth. The first affiliate, the start at CIS, started when now Senator King was mayor of Richmond. He brought CIS to Richmond. Richmond was the first affiliate in the Commonwealth in the nineties. It's also, I think, one of our largest. From there, we've grown based on really bipartisan state support for seed money to grow this model deliberately across the Commonwealth. CIS of Nova, when I established twelve years ago, part of it was from seed money from, I think it was Governor McDonald at the time. So every governor bipartisan has been supportive of sharing this model, because ultimately, it's a locally owned, at some point, it's locally owned model. It reflects the needs and the desires and basically the profile of the communities that we serve. So right now, there's seven affiliates managing and touching a little over 100,000 students. This, for me, is my board. These are the people that helped me with partnerships, with resources. There's also a trustee council that I have. One of the benefits of my affiliate is the founder of CIS, his name is Bill Milliken. I don't know if anyone has ever heard of Bill, he's a bit of a national profile. He's retired now, but he lives in Arlington. So I have Bill around, which is fantastic. And so, my trustee council is really a series of people that he's been friends and supporters of him and CIS's work for the last forty years, and they're part of my trustee council. They have been, they're passionate about CIS as a model. My board is passionate about CIS in terms of growing our particular affiliate organization. This is our Partner Schools. Very much like Lambs Lane, most of these schools are feeder pattern-driven, from elementary to middle to high schools. We have just one school at Fairfax right now, so obviously, there's no feeder pattern there, but Prince William, Arlington, Alexandria, and Alexander and Arlington have feeder patterns that really kind of help us, especially with family engagement, follow the student and the families from the journey from elementary, middle, to high school to graduation. And the expansion that we talked about here is Lambs Lane and Red Hill. This is really important, again, this goes back to really what I hope you guys take away from this. This is CIS. These are my site coordinators. They are full-time, every day, in the schools in which they are serving. They have a door, they have an email address, they have access to student data, they are working as a team member in that school. And they work and support each other, they get support from the larger network, and also from the school system that they're working in. The profile of most of our site coordinators, two to three years of experience, either in school, maybe Peace Corps, bilingual, many of them, a little over half of them are bilingual. A lot of them are working in neighborhoods in communities in which they grew up, in Arlington, Alexandria, Prince William. The hires that we are bringing in Charlottesville is the same way, a lot of them are from here, so they have a connection to your community. Just to kind of zero in a little bit on, one of our site coordinators who's been with us, actually just left us, she's serving the school, she started it and now is a social worker, but it's really a good example of how I envision site coordinators coming into Albemarle County, into your schools. Madeline quickly embedded herself, and again, it's the leadership to the school that saw her in that way, embedded herself in the support and understanding of what was needed at that school. They have a really large, about fifteen hundred Title I middle school, fifteen, one hundred students. I think it's eighty percent free and reduced lunch. When we got there, the principal was, it's her first year, after a series of episodic leadership changes, and it was an unaccredited school at that point. So there was a lot of chaos as we started, but we, and the principal, Perret, actually was part of the introduction to the group that came, the field trip that came up to visit us. She leaned on us, and we leaned on her, and we, part of the investment that came into Madeline, not only came from CIS of Nova, but it also came from the school system and the principal. So she went and got trained up in Harvard in a summer sort of series on sort of a well-known family framework, dual framework, from Dr. Map, Karen Map, and brought that back, not only to Hammond, but also shared it across all of the schools that we're in. And it just really informed the work that's happening. So when I think about the site coordinators coming into your schools at Lambs Lane and Red Hill, these are people that are going to be hopefully deliberately seen as an asset and part of the team, not as sort of an extra. So the investment, the more investment that the principals in the school makes into them, it'll come back. that the principals in the school makes into them, it'll come back. The other part of it is, as you saw, that National MAP, there's, there's a lot of resources that come across and we have access to. And Madeline was a part of a co-design, a servant immigrant youth co-design group. We were on one of only 10 affiliates that were part of this national co-design. It was right around COVID, dealt a lot with the refugee population, which in Alexandria, there's a lot, a lot of Afghani populations that came in. So it was about national best practices. It was also about resources, where to find them, both, you know, in terms of grants, but also private resources. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of wealth of, of information out there and resources that our site coordinators can ultimately get access to while they're with you. What we do. One of the things is, one of the most obvious ones, I call it sort of a gateway resource, is the basic needs, right? If you, if you ultimately find a resource to somebody, it starts a conversation with a student. Whether it's food, whether it's clothing, whether it's healthcare, you build trust with, with the school and the students that you're with. Amazon has new H2Q headquarters is in, is in Arlington. And so they, when they came in a few years ago, they were very keen to try to find partners. And they, and we've been partnering with them since then to really find ways to show genuine impact in the schools in which they had now have a headquarters and a growing number of, of, of employees, kids in, in the school system. And I, if you talk to them, I think they would say that one of the values that they have with, with, with my organization is they know exactly where their investment's going. They, they know. So for them, it was giving out digital codes for resources that, that parents could sort of redeem online when schools were shut down. So it could have been anything from headphones to desks to detergent to food. And then when schools opened up again, they kept the program going because they saw actually connected to the students that they were looking to, to serve. And so for the last four years, we've been working with Amazon, not only in the schools that we partner with in Arlington, Alexandria, but also all the schools that have high needs. We work with the social workers across 54 schools in Arlington, Alexandria to, to get Amazon's resources to those families and students. And we can show the impact to the, to the, to Amazon. We can show exactly where and what schools and what dosage these resources are hitting. And the other part of this is our, my man Carlos up here putting on his eyeglasses. VSP is a, is a national vision eye, like a mobile lab. Starts in California, they come across every year. And they sort of recruit a whole volunteer of optometrist to basically dedicate hours to not only do screenings, mobile, like in this, these RV pulls up to the school, they, they screen all the students and they make the glasses that day. So it's all done that day. And the, you know, the payoff is watching that kid for the first time put glasses on. That was something that, that was very frustrating for VSP because they couldn't get a school system to really commit to it. They just didn't have anyone that was going to own it, right? So they, they would knock on the door of a school and the principal didn't know, great resource, we need it. But the, the time and the hours to be able to identify the students, to get, you know, sort of permission slips, to be able to sort of organize the bus to come for those hours. It's, it seems tedious, but it's, it's, it's another thing that someone may or may not, you know, own. And we have done it to the point where it started in two schools. And this year, we went to 11 schools and over 200 students. And Carlos here, for the other part of the story, was somebody who has been, we've been trying to get him glasses for two years. For whatever reason, he just didn't want to do it. And it was really that relationship with our site coordinator, with Madeline, that ultimately she just said, look, I'm going to put you in a headlock if you don't come down here and take a look, you know? So he trusted her enough to do it. So sort of the story behind that is the resources that come to your door, but it doesn't mean it's going to hit the right student. For a variety of reasons, resources don't always get where they need to be. And that's one of the values of having that sort of relational router, that sort of site coordinator in the middle of the school. Attendance is obviously a big issue. It's been a big issue since COVID. There is no magic bullet to attendance. It's a struggle. But again, it's alive, it's based on relationships. We've had the most success in the, in the places we've been the longest because we know where the students are, we know their families. We do home visits in a lot of our schools. So we go and talk to students and families before school starts, during winter breaks. School sometimes is a very complicated relationship with some of our students, right? They don't perform well, they don't feel connected to it. So attendance is a struggle, but we have a variety of different approaches that we, we, we address attendance with. And especially the students that we case manage, we really make a deal with them in terms of creating a plan and a touch point to see them on a regular basis. SEL, social emotional learning, a lot of our students are first gen EL students. A lot of them come when they come. They don't come in September, they don't leave in June, they can come in March. And so really the idea is how do you sort of connect a student to a school that they, for a variety of reasons, feel alienated from? So we have everything, most of the work that we do is during the school each day. So when I think about Boys and Girls Club, you know, connecting them to resources afterwards is, is very important. But we also want to get them coming to the school and feeling connected to the school that they're in. So we do a lot of things between art and lunch, casual lunch language learning, lunch bunches to sports. A lot of it, as you can appreciate, is just based on the, the site coordinators. Like in, for instance, in, in our high schools, we have at least two site coordinators. We try to make, we try to make sure that there's a male and a female. So gender, so we can focus on, you know, some, some aspects of SEL is around sort of, you know, girls' clubs and boys' clubs. Language is another issue that we try to make sure we have a bilingual site coordinator whenever possible. We create a pre and post-assessment. We use DESTA up in, in Alexandria because that's the assessment they use for, for SEL. So whatever assessments that are, are used in the schools down here, we'll use the same assessments. So we're, we're talking about the same things, measuring the same things, which is really important. Graduation seniors, you see Senator Warner up there. He is one of our co-chairs of CIS of Virginia. Him and Governor Allen were really instrumental in bringing CIS, growing CIS across the Commonwealth. He lives in Alexandria, so he likes to come up to Alexandria High School once in a while. The, the work that we do with grad, with seniors, again, there's at least two site coordinators at the high school level because of the size of the schools. So we tend to have some that are more graduation oriented and post-college oriented junior, senior case managed students with one site coordinator. And then you have sort of the transition from middle school to high school, ninth and 10th grade. Doesn't always break down that way, but we try to make sure we spread and reach a, a variety of different students across a high school. We have, we've been doing this for 12 years. So we have what we call CIS alumni. So students that graduated from Wakefield and from Alexandria City and from some of our high schools. A lot of them went to community colleges, a lot of them went to George Mason, a lot of them are in the area. And so we bring them back and we let them basically have these, you know, lunch opportunities with a lot of our seniors to help them realistically understand the challenges they're going to face navigating everything from a FAFSA to college to working while you're there. It's been really helpful. It's a sort of a near peer and it's, it's very powerful. We do all variety of different career panels based on the surveys of our students, what they're interested in, everything from tech to marketing to auto body, whatever, whatever gets them interested, we're going to find people from the community to come in and talk to them about it. Partnerships at the, at the school level are different than an Amazon partnership or a vision partnership. Partnerships with, with, at the high school level, there are a lot of really strong nonprofits that do some really great work. And it's not a competition. We make sure that they have the space that they need to be able to get in front of students that they need to. So Liberty's Promise is one that's up in, up in Northern Virginia. They are very good at, at, at leadership for first generation, first to go to college families. So we help them with grant writing. So we can tell them that we know exactly the students they're going to be working with. And even little things about just how to basically get a room in a high school for, you know, twice a week, three times a week. Making sure that students know that this resource is there. Harris Seekin Foundation, it's a small foundation, but they're really dedicated to sort of paid internships or job shadowing. Just a really passionate couple of people that sort of newly retired that really feel like they had resources that they want to bring to the school. And that really worked out for us. I'm sure there's a lot of that here in Albemarle County that we can help deliberately bring to the schools that we're in. Our impact, this was just this past year. So we served over 25,000 students across 17 schools. Case managed, so one-on-one management of close to 700 students. Half of them are English language learners. 80% of them are, you know, economically disadvantaged. There's a lot of outcomes and outputs here, but the, the, the success of our academic attendance, social, emotional, behavioral, and career, those are goals that are set with the individual student. So those are part of that 700 cohort. The, as you can see, the attendance is a, is, I've never seen it that low. It's 69% met their goal. So the students that we had attendance goals with, only 69% met it. Honestly, it's, we added seven schools from Prince William this year and it's about relationships, right? And so our site coordinators were, spent the year learning their students and getting their students to trust them. And then working with the school system to understand what our role can and should be going through. So I, I think it's one of those, it takes a little while. And so what Dr. Kaiser talks about, this idea of a three-year grant. I haven't left the school I started in, in the 12 years. I don't, I don't have any desire and don't ever want to break that streak. I've been a teacher where I've seen resources come into schools and with a lot of good intention and dry up and go away. Students aren't leaving. So I've grown very deliberately and very methodically over the last 12 years because I, I want to enter into schools and school systems as partners for a long time. So I think it's really important because the successes that we have in year one or two are going to get better and better and better. The longer we're with you, the longer the, the trust between student and site coordinator, between site coordinator and school, between community and the school is going to grow. This is sort of what I was just mentioning, this is sort of the long, sort of makes me feel very old. I started this in 2013, so the last 10 years of growth. Again, I've been really, I, I founded this, I wanted to be very deliberate about it. And I think we've done a really good job navigating and, and like the network itself, it become recognized from people like Bommer. And, and that's been a sort of a, a real validation for us. And this is our revenue, this is where our money comes from. So half of our money right now is public funding. That means we're in the budget in the, and most of the school systems we're in. We also get some state money. I was, I was telling you, we have bipartisan support from the state that gives us some money. Then there's some federal money that we've, we've been able to get through Senator Warner and Senator Kane. So that's for the public side. The grants are only going to get greater. We have a grant writer who's fantastic. And the longer we're at this as an organ, as an affiliate, the more we can show impact in the schools that we're in. Not just use sort of the national numbers, but use the numbers of the, of, of the schools that we're actually engaged in. We do, we do events and campaigns and fundraisers to get ourselves out there. My board of directors is, you know, are part of that responsibility is to sort of help raise not just awareness, but dollars to match the public investment. Any questions?
I have one last part.
Oh.
Before we get to the questions.
Okay.
So now, for CIS ACPS, our next steps in the implementation includes hiring site coordinators. One site coordinator for Greer, one for Red Hill, one for Journey, and two for AHS. And the site coordinators are hired by and employees of CIS. The site coordinators will have training at the beginning of August with CIS. And they will also join their respective school teams and engage with the beginning of the year, school and division-wide training. The site coordinators will conduct a needs assessment and gain feedback from administrators, staff, students, and families in which to, to develop a plan. And this plan is consistent with our division's strategic plan and strategic school improvement goals that drive the work that will be conducted for the year. The Office for Community Engagement will support the CIS coordinators with connecting to community partners and resources. And the Albemarle Foundation for Education will partner with and support securing various investments. Lastly, we will have a kickoff to launch CIS with a community event, including collaboration with various community partners. And this will be on the Lamb's Lane campus for our students, families, and the entire community. And we look forward to sharing with the community this wonderful model and inviting even more community partners to join in this effort. And our goal is to expand out this model. And, and Patrick, we talked a lot in the beginning about like, how many schools should we start with? And just having an opportunity to launch the, the model, see how our results are after the first year, start building those relationships, and then start adding on. Because we would want to have CIS schools and continue with the Southern feeder pattern, add more to the Northern feeder pattern, and expand out to the Western feeder pattern. So our hope is to have schools in each feeder pattern. So again, we're excited about this and we welcome your questions at this time.
I had, I do have a couple, I know you're shocked. How is this different from our safety coaches and, you know, social emotional coaches that we already have in place? And how will they be working together in those schools?
Sure. It's just a little different in that the CIS coordinators, again, they conduct this needs assessment in the beginning. And they work with the school administrators and the leadership team at the school to really focus in on the needs of students as well as families. The CIS coordinators also collaborate and partner with community partners and gain resources and gain resources from the network to be able to support students and families in the schools. And then they also provide whole school programming for, for the particular school. And then they case manage up to 50 students and provide tier, tier two and tier three supports to the students that they case manage. So it's, it's a little bit different with the community partner aspect of it and also the alignment with the, direct and intentional alignment with the school goals. And making sure that their work is consistent and directly aligns and works together to, with the, with the goals of the school and their initiatives. And moving the school forward when you're thinking about basically three buckets of, of, of work. Your tutoring, your mentoring is one bucket. Your support for basic needs is another bucket. And social emotional learning. And then also your family and community engagement. So those are the three buckets that they're working through.
Will the social emotional coaches through ACPS be working with the CIS coordinators then on the social emotional stuff? So that we're not, you know, kind of stepping on each other's toes or doing the same work, I guess?
Extra hands to do the work, yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's great. I think it's impressive that, you know, we're not recreating the wheel and we're using a proven model for some, you know, really important needs in our community. Two more questions. How do we determine what kids get case managed in the school? I mean, I know you do like the needs assessment, but then how do you choose those specific kids that are going to receive the services?
So again, that would be communication with the principal, leadership team, and looking at, looking at data for students in the building. And also it coincides with whatever the specific academic goals or discipline goals or attendance that the school is, is focused on. So you're going to look at, look at your students and look to see who would benefit from having that extra support.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, some of it's data, like, so for us, it could be a Weeter score, right? So the principal would say, you know, at a low Weeter score at a certain age, we want to make sure that that person is getting support. It might be a support from CIS, it might be a support from your SEL. I mean, the idea that is to do an evaluation, right? And then figure out where the gap is and how to sort of hone in on it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, it seems really Yeah, I mean, it seems really exciting. I'm excited to see the data on, you know, improvements that we see. On this slide with the cost, I see colors, but what is the actual cost for ACPS? And was that included in this year's budget? And where did that fall? Just curious, because I hadn't heard about this before.
So, there were one-time funds that were identified to support this effort in the division for the three-year investment from our part.
Three, okay.
And then, we also have to fundraise, so that's part of it. And then, CIS has the biggest bulk of the pie with the grant funding, from the Ballmer grant funding.
If I could just add a little bit to Ms. Spillman. Dr. Kaiser and Mr. Brennan also presented today to the Albemarle Foundation for Education.
Oh, great.
And so, we on the foundation board are very interested in supporting this and planning together for this fall launch and do fundraising around this. I mean, it falls well within our overall strategic plan and our goals there, and we're very excited about it.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful. I guess my concern is that, you know, we have to fundraise to support this, but we're talking about getting into a school and not wanting to pull out. So, I guess I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, we don't have the funds all up front to support the program and that, you know, what if the fundraising doesn't come through or something like that? I'm just a little cautious, I guess. But I think it's awesome. I just hope that we can do that, I guess.
I've never started anywhere where we've had all the funding for three years. I mean, you got to prove it to the community, right? And so, you got to go out to the community, you got to tell them what you're doing, you got to show them what you're doing. So far, for 12 years, and they've been able to continue to garner that community support to match the public support.
So, we have enough funding for one year, or where are we right now to like support?
For our three-year investment, for the school division's three-year investment.
Okay, we have that funded, yes. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Question about the career pathways.
Yeah.
If the student is not interested in going to college.
Yeah.
Would you bring in partners that could maybe address what that student's need would be?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, career pathways are just that, right? So, it could be, you know, there's a, if, I don't know what your CTE programs are like here, but there's also a lot of, there's a lot of different, there's a lot of different industries around Northern Virginia that we bring in that want to create apprenticeship programs for students, that want to have opportunities for students to be able to sort of earn and learn. So, yes, it's not just college. It is the idea that you have to meet them where they're at and be able to understand that there's a journey in terms of their educational, post-secondary education.
Thanks. And going to the fundraising part.
Yeah.
Do you think that Amazon would cut off their funding in Northern Virginia, or could they give us something here in Alamo?
Oh, you want a piece of Amazon, do you? Is that what you're saying? No, actually, they, they don't want, they only are doing Alexandria and Arlington. Because when we went to Prince William, like, hey, we're going down to Prince William, like, nah. They're focused completely. And so, then they said, well, talk to AWS, the web service, and they don't talk to each other, apparently, though they have the same first name. So, it's, you just got to find regional support, and it's here. I know it's here. One of the reasons why my board was really supportive of this is because a lot of them have connections down here, and they feel like it's just a matter of getting them engaged.
And I think this is a natural connection too, to the Star Hill pathways, you know, through the Equity Center at UVA. I'm seeing a lot, like, when you talked about the career pathways, I just see that connection. There's a lot, it's like Velcro, we've got a lot of hooks in the school system and with a lot of the partners that we have that I think fit very nicely with the sticky stuff in the CIS program. So, it should line up really nicely.
Yeah, and Ben Allen from, he came up and did the tour, and we've talked a lot about that connection already. So, yeah, there's a lot here.
So, I just, I just wanted to get back to that question that Allison had. That one-time funding, where did that come from? Or I don't know if someone else can answer that.
I don't remember the exact fiscal year, but sometime during the COVID timeframe, I only have a COVID brain, but at some point during that timeframe, the board set aside money into a learning recovery fund, and that we have been, we have been spending it through summer school and some other efforts, but there was a substantial amount of money still in that fund. And so, we sat as a team and determined best use of that, and this was one of the strategies. The others are to support those TSI schools. So, it came from that fund.
And I'd also add, the Ballmers' funding is predicated on school systems putting some skin in the game, right? I won't get that money unless it's matched with some public money, because they want to see it go beyond what their funding, so.
Was this decided before we made budget decisions, or was it after?
It was after.
Okay.
This was a budget initiative when we thought we were having a healthier, healthier budget, and so, it was removed and never presented as a part of the funding request. But it kept coming up as far as the school's interest in it and needs, and so, we were thinking creatively of other ways to fund it.
Could you talk a little bit more about the training for the site coordinators? Like, both, you mentioned a tiny bit about kind of the who, but kind of what qualities you're looking for, and then how they're training, and then where they fit in? Do they go to the ACPS program coordinator, then kind of go up definitely through your team, or do they report into the local school for supervision?
I can tell you about our training. CIS has a, like, an accreditation process to be an affiliate, right? And its best practices, both in terms of implementing the model itself in the school, and then there's also sort of the business-side practices of being a 501(c)(3). So, for the training for site coordinators, there's a series of trainings and modules that they go through to understand how to be a site coordinator in terms of implementation, assessment, setting and setting goals. Data is a big part of it. So, they're basically chronicling and talking about how many times they work with students, how many resources they bring in. So, every week at the end of the week, there's sort of this time devoted to the idea of sort of capturing what they're doing in the school. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of sort of logistical pieces, but then there's just a lot of, just to understand, it's a real challenge for somebody to come into a school and not be a school member, but you want them to be a school partner. And so, they have to first be liking kids and getting in with kids, but they also have to deal with all the other different parts of the school. So, it's a, it's a real skill set that you have to sort of be really deliberate about. And we're there at the invitation of the school, right? So, we have to have some deference to what the principal wants and when he, or she wants. So, it's, there's some parts of it that just has to be a bit of a, you know, of a lesson, and we have a program manager that's going to continue to support them on that. So, there's sort of a national modules, and there's some state support where we bring a lot of the site coordinators together with everyone else from the Commonwealth, talk about best practices, and then those are ongoing re-support systems that they have throughout the year.
And then, the site coordinators, once they're here in the division, they'll participate with the rest of our staff, with their school staff, and engage in professional development and become a part of the school team. So, they'll become a part of the school's leadership team, they'll sit, they'll be able to converse and talk with the principal and the different specialists and instructional coach in the building, and SEL coaches and other staff members. So, they'll, they'll be a part of that community in the school and all work together, work collaboratively together.
Are they ACPS employees or CIS?
They're CIS employees.
Or CIS employees? Got it, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, but they get certified in sort of mandatory reporting, background checks, all the child abuse, all that, they have all of that too that comes with them.
Okay, thank you for that, that was a helpful clarification.
Yeah.
I want to say just one thing, and I think, Dr. Kaiser, this is probably pretty obvious, but this sounds perfect for Agner and Woodbrook even more so, and those are my schools, so I want to put a plug in for them. I know you have to start with a small footprint, but I hope that...
And actually, Agner and Woodbrook are interested in the programming. So, they're next on the list.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the slide is not too clear. Will there be one coordinator for Greer, Red Hill, and Journey, or one at each place?
One at each site, and Albemarle High School will have two coordinators.
Okay, all right.
In terms of the Albemarle Foundation for Education's support of this, I mean, it will be much easier fundraising, given the evidence-based program this is, the caliber of supporters that it has. We will be able to say, this is what the impact will be, this is what we're trying to accomplish, we'll have concrete plans or this, because I can't even remember what you call them, Patrick, but assessments for each school, and we will be able to see the needle move. I am confident we'll be able to raise the money. And I think this is probably the best program that we could adopt at this point. I think it covers, you know, the emotional and educational health of our kids, but also much more broadly. It is something to talk about with our entire community. I say this because I've heard Peter, I've heard Patrick's presentation three times, but it was very good this time too.
And there's, and there's state support for this. So, you know, I think this past session, they established an office of community school in VDOE, and they're going to start funding that to continue to reach more schools. So, having, establishing it here and then showing it and then going, you know, towards, with your delegates and your state senators, say, we're already dealing with fidelity, a model that you deem to be the best community school model, will there be public, will there be public dollars in grant funding for that also? And I believe there will be. I look forward to it.
So, when will booths be on the ground?
Well, good question. I mean, soon. We hired, I think, four of the six already. So, the idea is to have them come up to us and, you know, we get a turn at them first, and then we'll bring them down here to you guys and get them, get them embedded in early, early August.
Will you invite us to the thing on the 31st, was it the 31st?
So, we'll have the kickoff event during the first nine weeks. So, it'll be a little bit after school starts, we'll get our needs assessments done, and we'll be able to really share with the community the work, and they'll be able to meet all of the site coordinators, and we'll have some special surprises as well at that event.
Mm-hmm, yes. We're already working on it.
Well, we are certainly looking forward to that and this work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for making the trip, Patrick.
Sure.
Thank you, Daphne.
Thank you.
So, we're down to other business. Any other business by board or superintendent?
I have two quick things. One, Mr. Watson from 100 Black Men of Charlottesville, the event I think that you were referring to is their event on the 31st, and he said that we will be getting an invitation to that digitally. He just didn't have the specifics tonight, so just keep an eye out for that. But we're all invited, so. And then, Dr. Haas, I just would like an update on the cell phone task force, especially given the, I guess, credit where credit's due with Governor Youngkin's new executive order on cell phones in the schools.
So, we had, we have all the committee members selected, and our schedule was sent out to all the members that we picked. We've got families, we got a parent, student, staff member, administrator or counselor from each school, as well as department members. And so, we had the message that we sent out, that was already ready to roll. We were planning on sending it out. We just wait, when the governor came out with his announcement, we added that to it. So, and that committee will start meeting. And in addition to that, we had a meeting today with one of our middle schools, not going to name schools yet, but we're going to start piloting with their sixth-grade class using a technology called a YonderPouch, which is, you can, it's Y-O-N-D-R. You can look it up to see how it works. So, we're going to start working on that. To get out in front of the committee a little bit, that announcement was just the first, and then we're also going to push that announcement back out again to remind families again going into the school year of our current policy. We're also going to put paper flyers in first-day packets, so parents will see it again to remind them of our policy. And the purpose of the committee will be to really establish, go back to the drawing board and establish what is our vision in Alamo County schools for, for want of a better term, that was used to the governor's information, around cell-free, cellphone-free learning. So, what does that look like? What's it look like at elementary school, middle school, high school? And then, establish the gap between what our vision is and then also, and where we are, and then work on ways, including technology like the YonderPouch and other strategies to help us get to that vision. So, that's where we are right now.
So, would our goal be to hit the ground running with what we said we were going to do at the beginning of the school year? And then, because the governor has given us a deadline of January 1st, 2025, would the committee's work be done by that point?
I feel that what the governor's going to put out is going to be just a lot like our policy, because it talks, it's the same issues. They talk about distraction, addiction, and mental health issues with students. So, I feel like those are the same goals roughly. I feel like the goal is to eliminate the distractions caused by cell phones during instructional time and to empower staff to be able to deal with it and empower kids to learn, like Clay was talking about earlier. You know, we've, the technologies here, we might wish there was a world where it wasn't. I, for one, do. But things are the way they are, and students, young people have to learn to adapt to the technology that's going to keep evolving, and so, we want to, we want to make sure it's a learning experience. So, I feel like we're going to be right on track with that. I'd be surprised if there's anything new in there that we haven't tried. And I'm also looking forward to see how our pilot goes, because if it's effective and we learn from it, then we're going to roll it out to, my plan is to roll it out to all of the middle schools, sixth grades halfway through the year to keep moving in that direction.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Or maybe one clarification? I think the program on July the 31st is going to be with NSB up at UVA. It's not going to be through the 100 Black Men. So, it's going to be up at UVA.
Yeah, they're like, end of the six-week program. They're like, yeah, their finals, yeah. And then, just last thing I had was, I'd just like to remind, to send a reminder on the safe gun storage for the beginning of the year, that something goes out again with the back-to-school stuff, either first-day-of-school packet or in an email, since it's a new, it'll be a new school year, and it'll be a good reminder, please. Thank you.
I just wanted to note, it really, this isn't a special board meeting or anything like that, but it just really struck me how deeply equity was discussed and throughout the board meeting, through so many of the presentations. And as, you know, Ms. Early said, we have a lot of work to do, but also, I think we are moving in that right direction. So, just because it's a July school board meeting, and we discussed it at basically every point, I just, I think it's important to call that out, and I really appreciate that. Matt, I appreciate your work. All of us, we're on the same page.
It felt like there was a lot of really good things happening for the first time in a while.
Yeah.
It feels good, yeah.
Yeah, so, without any other business, this meeting's adjourned.